I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting to order today. This is our regular Wednesday at noon meeting, first and third Wednesday of the month. We -- all members are present. We do have a new member present today, Nancy Bain. So I do appreciate you volunteering your efforts to be part of this Planning Commission. We have, again, established quorum. I do need to administer an oath. If you plan to speak at today's Planning Commission meeting, all you have to do is say "I do" after I administer it. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth to this commission?
I can't hear you. I can't hear you back here.
Okay.
Same one.
Yeah.
Project.
Okay. All right. So I'll just speak a little louder so we can get the speakers working in the room. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth to this commission? All you have to do is say "I do."
I do.
All right. Thank you very much. Disposition of our special sessions meeting minutes, and I believe this also includes the minutes from the meeting prior to that. Does everyone get an opportunity to review those before today's proceedings? I think Char had emailed them either last night or today.
Could you speak up just a little bit for us, people way back here?
Sure. Tell him to come.
Why don't you sit -- can you want to sit closer also, maybe?
Maybe your mic's not working.
I think it's your mic.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Somebody should try.
Is it?
Well, I don't know.
Can we have one of those?
Okay, but it sounds like RJ's audible, but Nicholas is not.
Okay. All right. So we're disposition of the previous meeting's minutes, special setting, and the last one. Does everyone have an opportunity to review those?
I'm still reviewing.
Okay. Thank you.
I did. The only change I presented to Charlene was the January 11th, when it says that it was a regular meeting. It really was a special meeting. That's the first line on that. I think everything else is accurate, as far as I can tell. So I would move we accept the minutes of the January 4th and January 11th, unless somebody else has the minutes on it.
Second motion. All those in favor of accepting the minutes, say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, one outstanding. Thank you. All right. Next, we have cases number 1203. Just one case on the agenda today. It is Advanced Auto Parts at 955 East State Street. It is a Title 41 site plan review. Mr. Paskey or Mr. Lo, could you please provide us a brief summary and staff review from this case?
This is a pretty simple, at least in my opinion, project. The applicant is present, Mr. Rick Dillsaber. He's with Cedarwood Development. They are doing the site planning and development for this project. The current location, it's the former structure, it's the former location of a seafood, I believe Captain D's, it's fast food or something like that. The property's been vacant for some time. Mr. Dillsaber is speaking on behalf of Advanced Auto Parts. He would like to locate one of their stores there. This is a Title 41 site plan review. The location is in an M industrial zone. In relation to traffic, East State Street clearly is adequate to provide sufficient circulation for this type of a use. The ingress and egress will be served from an existing driveway. That also provides ingress and egress for a strip mall on the southern portion of the parcel. The strip mall has retail and restaurant uses in it. The across the street area from this location is zoned for B3 general business. There is some residential uses within proximity on the north side of East State, as well as some offices and a vacant piece of commercial property. And then we have staff input on the project. According to code enforcement, our code enforcement director, it does meet all requirements for zoning.
I would like to add that I just handed you a new site plan that does show the front setback of 25 foot. The one that was in the packet, the front yard setback was not great enough, and they did move the building back to accommodate the proper setback.
Okay.
And then in relation to other site plan review standards, Chief Troxel reviewed it, gave very general standard comments that he always provides. Had no other concerns about it. Police Chief Tom Hile did not have any issues from the APD standpoint. And then there's an attached memo from the Public Works Department relating to just a few of their comments. And all of these comments have been provided to Mr. Dillsaber.
Okay.
I believe this project was presented to the shade tree commission last Thursday.
Yes. And their input was?
Excuse me, I can read that to you. The plans stated 1512 presented to the commission were accepted subject to the following amendments, which were accepted by Mr. Rick Dillsaber on behalf of the owner. Title 37 requires 18 large shade trees to be planted on this site based on the area of the site. 11 large shade trees are identified on the plans. An additional seven large shade trees are needed. There appears to be space for at least an additional four large trees on the site. The remainder requirement may be met by planting in the right of way alongside East State Street. Trees in this area may only be small trees where three small trees equals one large shade tree. The commission grants permission for the owner to plant trees in the right of way adjacent to the leased area. The commissioners were pleased with choice of species and noted that none were to be of the colander or, I don't know, that's the type, so.
So how many total was it again?
They needed 18, and they had 11, but they, with the building being slid back a little bit, they were able to accommodate some smaller trees out front and put in some other trees along the side. I believe that Mr. Dillsaber could probably speak more to that, but I think they were able to put them closer together to get a couple more in.
Okay. And that adjacent lot is undeveloped?
Correct.
If you look at the off, though, it's actually grass?
To the east of it, yes.
And so if that gets developed, what happens?
Well, I think they're going to maybe count the trees both ways. They'll be on a property line, in essence. I can't speak for them on that, whether they count them or not.
Okay. And the main difference I see with the changed map that you gave us, plot that you just gave us, is that it looks like the building kind of shifted, so it's actually parallel to the road or askew?
Yeah.
And that made up the 25-foot setback this way?
Well, it looks like they slid it back two foot as well.
Okay. And I see the notation about water lines being off. See, existing water main piece being in the wrong location. This is from January 13th, Engineering Public Works Review. I assume that's changed on the new one as well. It's like it's in the same spot.
Wow. I believe if you look at the plan that Andy provided there, I highlighted Andy put a comment as to where it should be located. I believe that's what his commentary is.
Okay. So that will be?
To get that adjusted.
Corrected. Okay. That's what I wanted to know. That's been recognized. And I see the city would prefer grease interceptor to be reused.
There's an existing interceptor. I talked to Andy about this on the site because it was a restaurant, and he said if possible, if the new building's not going to be built over top of it, that they would like to have it, he would like to have it remain in case a restaurant was to go back into this building someday. So I can, the developer can speak more to that, whether it can be saved or not.
I was trying to imagine where you'd need a grease interceptor for lot of parts unless you work on vehicles themselves. All right. See, you said, John, that you weren't sure how the shade tree viewed the four trees that were to be credited to the property?
I do not know.
Okay.
Since this is a lease, is there some sort of legal document that reflects that you're authorized or that lease has been entered into, or is that something that's going to show property isn't owned by a high university?
My name's Rick Dillsaber. I'm with Cedarwood Development out of Akron, Ohio, representing the project here today. If I could, first, I'd like to extend some thanks to both Mr. Lo and Mr. Paskey for helping me get this far. Their assistance in making all this work is greatly appreciated. And we're here today to show you a site plan, and I think you have copies there in front of you. We are hopeful to redevelop the existing but closed Captain D's Restaurant located at 955 E Street, East State Street. Intend to tear that building down and build a new building. You asked specifically a question about documents. The ground lease that we're entering into with the university should be executed next week, I think. All business points have been addressed, and I think we're just crossing Ts and dot and Is right now before that's executed. As a predecessor to that, we have executed an access agreement which allows me to go onto the property and do things like survey it and drill some holes and so forth, so I can get started on fairly typical due diligence activities. So we're very, the negotiations are very advanced.
Do you do that directly with the university or with a managing entity for that property?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part.
Do you do that directly with a high university, or is there a managing entity that handles that process?
There is a, like a master lessor, I believe it's Continental, but the university has retained Continental to handle the leasing and re-tenanting of most of that university-owned property.
Thank you.
John or Paul, do you want to have the application for the Title 41 permit? Thank you. So it has been signed off by the owner? Of the property, then? Okay. Offhand, what's the difference in the footprint that's there and what you're going to replace it with? I don't have an image of either one in terms of comparison.
Sure, sure. The new building is larger. The existing Captain D's is on the order of, I believe, 4,200 square feet or so.
Okay.
We're coming back with something that is about 6,800 feet.
Okay.
Square feet.
Procedural question, John. Was there a sign put up for Title 41?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't see it, but then it said that.
We're making sure of these there.
Okay. And was the sign taken down for Beavovino? I saw it up there Saturday.
Yes. It had been taken down yesterday in the range.
Any other comments, questions?
I have one more, if I could.
Yes, go ahead.
There's a note on the plan that says the proposed four trees to be credited towards both properties. We can take that note off. My negotiations with Continental fell through on that point. So our trees will only count towards our property, and we'll probably end up scooting them a little closer to the building.
So you plan to put those trees in place?
Oh, yeah.
And inside your property line, the designated line since?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah. Are the seven going to go tree-banked? The extra seven are tree-banked, or are they going to be in the front?
In the front, in the northern public right of way.
Okay.
Well, some of them will be. Mr. Dillsaber, can you explain what happened at Shade Tree, the day?
This is an unique situation because it's a ratio of the entire lot. This is not an individual separate parcel. It's part of a large six or seven acre parcel, where they hold them all there. And there are trees throughout the rest of it. So they go by a ratio, is the way that was explained that they do that. And they wish that this site then meet the ratio of the rest of the property. And so that's how they come up with the numbers and the recommendations that they did.
Well, surely they don't mean that the entire, the burden on this development, this portion of parcel is supposed to meet?
Ratio of that area compared to the rest of them.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? You don't want to meet that over there?
Believe it or not, someone said, "I can't believe they're going to tear down the Captain D's Restaurants."
How long has it been?
It's been renting a long time. I didn't know if you could remodel it to work for autos or not.
Has it been long enough to be historic?
No.
It's amazing. I get that question a lot, about like, why don't you reuse the buildings there? Now, obviously, here we have a size difference that can't be overcome. The building coming in is much larger. But the reality is, almost always with the national tenants that I deal with and represent around the country, they report to Wall Street like any other public business, and they have a building that they build, and they have a formula that they run, and their investors expect them to run the formula. So they have to build the prototype building, that's why you tend to see an old building instead of be reused, they'll get torn down and the new building built.
There's two percenters. I'm sorry.
Offhand, how, what's your timetable on this? How fast?
We're opening this year.
Okay. That's fast. Just wondering.
Standing approved.
All right. There's no more comments. I'd like to put forth the motion to approve this site's plan review. I'll second. All right. Any other comments, discussion, questions?
Just that it complies with a staff review.
Okay. Yeah, it's always that it complies with the staff review as well as the Shade Tree Commission ruling from this past week.
Can I get one more thing in? I don't, do I get a copy of the Shade Tree? Is there a minutes from that meeting that?
Yes, I just got them yesterday. I will get them to you.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. All right. There's no further questions or discussions. All those in favor of approving this Title 41 site plan review, say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. And?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. All right. There's no other cases on the agenda currently? Thank you, John.
I'd like to come back this.
Do you have a member of communications on the agenda? The first is the PUD at 27 Meadow Lane. I believe this is an existing PUD with a request for an addition, to be made. John, I know you've been working on this for the past couple of weeks, so if you could provide us a summary when you're settled with it, appreciate it.
First of all, the, proposed for future applicants, called me about half hour before the meeting, said they were not able to make it today. So I don't know if we want to discuss it or move forward or discuss the situation or not, I guess. We'll wait until they're here.
What?
We'll wait until they're.
So you're concerned it's just speaking forward and making sure you have it all correctly, or?
I did extensive research this morning on the PUDs, especially on this particular site. There have been permits issued for additions within this PUD since 1986, none since 2004 with the exception of a deck, an elevated deck. Every one of the additions that were granted in the past were for decks, and then they were closed in, but they were all within, these buildings have like a little inset, an L-shaped inset on the rear of the buildings, and they would basically take that L and make it a square, so they were filling in that inset and screening it in and then putting a roof over it. This will be the only instance that we have on record. There have been some denied that went through the BZA and then yet did get a variance. And this is the only one we have on record. It'll be a second floor type request. I could not find anything in this, the PUD on this was from 1981. I could not find anything in everything I looked through for statute of limitations on PUDs, whether or not we need to get a legal opinion on that. We may have to do so. But what I was able to find, and going through the minutes of the Planning Commission from 1981, it says, "Since it is a PU development, PUD development, yard requirements need only be applied to the tract boundaries. Therefore, every application we've granted or has been applied for, and all the ones that were on the perimeter that maybe went into the rear yard, that was when there's only one of those, did go to the BZA. And all the others were internal and did not." So, but there was one that an addition was requested to be added on to, rather large. It was denied through the office, and the tenant never requested to go to the BZA. And then there was others where there was separate requests for garages, detached garage to be built to the rear of the site, maybe accessible through an alley, and those were denied because it specifically said in their covenants that they were not allowed to do a detached garage. There are some covenants in this one, deed restriction wise, that make this rather confusing as to what to do, and that's where Bain might be able to help us out a lot on this one in the history of this.
Thank you.
If I can find it here.
Okay. I believe the members of the Planning Commission did receive, I think, that packet that you have right there.
Yes, and there is something in the deed restrictions that say, "No alterations or exterior additions to any townhouse shall be permitted until the written plans and specifications showing the nature, kind, shape, height, materials, and location have been approved by the developer. Such approval should depend upon the harmony of the external design and the location in relation to surrounding townhouses and topography." Well, the developer was diversified properties, and that was soul and bloom, again, back in 1981. But part of the problem was, or is, subject to Section L, the covenants, easements, and restrictions of this declaration shall run with and bind the land for a term of 25 years from the date this declaration is recorded. Well, that's just been greater than 25 years. But after such time, these provisions shall be automatically extended for successive periods of 10 years unless amended or terminated. And it has not been amended or terminated. So I don't know if that means the developer still has input in this project or not.
On that note, I did speak with Mr. Wentworth, who's the president on page 11 here. He's still in town. He was a designer. I spoke with him this morning, actually, and from his position, you know, he's, this project was completed 30 years ago. He said, provided, you know, if there's an approval from the city or a variance awarded, he would still have to sign off on it based on the covenants. However, you know, if the city deems that any addition for any of these projects is warranted and approved, he provided that the addition meets the character of the remaining structures, he would not be interfering with denying it at that level, so. The question, I think, is that because this was a planned unit development back in 1981, and any changes to a planned unit development per code state that planned unit developments are recommended by the Planning Commission to City Council, and then same City Council would make an approval determination from that point. And I believe that's why the Board of Zoning Appeals chose not to review it.
Yes.
It's their opinion that Planning Commission should make a recommendation, either approve or deny, and then the City Council should deliberate from that point forward.
Which is even more confusing, since there was one that went through the Board of Zoning Appeals years ago.
Yeah.
Well, years ago, it was in, PUDs was in the zoning code. It got shifted over to subdivisions, so it may have fallen out because of that reason.
Well, that was 1993. This is one pretty much that was taken out. It used to be called Residential PUD in R1, R2, and R3. It was established in 1969 and went all the way up through 93 until it was written as it is today. So, but it didn't change a whole lot, and they just pretty much changed the numbers and restructured it. So it's basically the same language.
But they moved it from zoning code to subdivision, is that?
Yes, or they're, yes, subdivision regs.
Okay. And I'm aware that Herald Square, which was started as a PUD, shifted over to a subdivision because of the fee simple structure, my memory is correct. And this technically, these are fee simple townhouses.
Correct.
So there's a little bit of a blur there when a PUD is a PUD versus a subdivision with variances, I guess.
I guess. My biggest question, you know, the first time, you know, there's been history, I went to BZA, there's been history where additions have been approved, so I did send it, denied it based on setbacks, lot coverage, et cetera. You know, the rule of thumb that I've always used is they're changing the use, changing the occupancy, changing the footprint, or changing the roof line. Well, they're changing the roof line, so therefore it needs to come into compliance with the current code. Obviously, it could not come into compliance with rear yard setbacks, side yard, well, maybe not rear, but side yard setbacks and lot coverage. So we did go to the BZA, and the BZA pretty much decided that it was determined that it needs, maybe since of the change to a PUD, they come back through this process. The question I have is, if that's the case, how long is there statute of limitations on a PUD? And that may be where we need to look. I tried to do some quick searching through the higher vice code this morning, and I couldn't find, I found some stuff on condos, but I couldn't find it on townhouses and stuff like this.
Well, are we looking at the covenant or deed here? This appendices that's been submitted to us, that has a timeline on it, and we're on a second year, a 10-year rollover, if that's what I understand?
25 and then a 10-year rollover, yes.
Okay, so, so this might actually still be in place?
It is still in place.
Yes.
It is still in place.
So?
In regards to their covenants and deed, indeed, yes, it is still in place.
So it's still functioning as a PUD?
I, that's probably a good assumption.
Although, you know, we can always question that interpretation. Well, so would the, I guess, the person that originally filed the PUD have to be the one making this request?
But I think they do need to be here when we move forward on this, and maybe we're just talking in generality today, because this is something I've tried to discuss before as to, you know, the extended timeframes on PUDs and what people can do with them in the future.
Go ahead. I would make a motion to continue this as a case down the line as PUD when the person requesting it is there. I know I received a letter from Mr. Amid, I think it was the 14th, and I should submit that to the Planning Commission as well. Okay. And I think we have quite a bit of information. Does anybody else need this? Somebody's raising a hand. Go ahead. If you could just come to the podium or I believe the table microphone is available?
I can go over here just briefly.
That's fine. Just, we don't have microphones to pick you up, otherwise. Thank you.
You don't?
Oh, no. There.
Actually, my name is Abby Lavelle, and I am the trustee of 29 Meadow Lane.
Okay.
It is the adjacent property.
Okay.
The reason I am the trustee is my mother, actually, I own a property at 2 Meadow Lane that I purchased five and a half years ago. It's a one and a half bath, three-bedroom townhouse. Purchased it as is. I've made no changes. I raised two teenage children there. My mother was the owner of 29 Meadow Lane. She owned it for 16 years, purchased it as it is today. It's adjoining 27. It's, again, three-bedroom, two-bath. My mother passed away about three and a half weeks ago, and so I am the trustee of the She, my father is living in the home. He's 91, and I have 24-hour, round-the-clock caregivers with him in the home. But I just, and I know this is brief, but I just, I want to submit to begin with, I'm going to submit a petition to the board or to the commission from many of our neighbors in the PUD, voicing our objection, and I'll probably circulate these pictures if I could. What I want to state is regarding the request by the owner of 27, he purchased that two and a half years ago with full knowledge of what he was purchasing. It is a three-bedroom, two-full-bath townhouse with an extensive deck and additional, I don't know, rocks and bricks that cover the entire lot. But my main concern? But my main concern, well, not just my main concern, one of my concerns, I want to express this to you, is what effect this will have on my father's townhouse, our townhouse. And I don't know if you can see this, but this is the back of my mother's townhouse right here, and the one in the center is the townhouse at 27 Meadow Lane. The only property with, number one, a chimney and everything else. They want to build out an addition, basically a wall coming out that will block, as you can see the sun, I know they had all the whatever. These are the bedrooms. This is, these are the bedrooms in the back of the townhouse that I am the trustee for now. And again, it will have a major impact on the light and the airflow in this townhouse. And again, I just want to show you another view here. This is the 27 Meadow with their deck coming out, and this is the extensive deck already in existence on the back of the townhouse with all of this encroaching on property lines, the adjacent property owners. And again, a top view, the lighter color siding is our townhouse, and this is the other, and they want to build a wall out. So virtually any, you know, you're going to be looking out now instead of at the sky and the trees with the airflow, and you're going to be looking at a wall. I strongly oppose construction of this. I mean, I think it's a luxury request. Any property that has three bedrooms, two full baths, I think is more than adequate. I'm going to submit a letter from the, one of the townhouse property owners in the rear, and I am going to submit this petition, again, from many of us, I don't know how many property owners, but opposing this. So I just wanted to have an opportunity to speak to the commission. You know, a lot of these people have owned, the lady who is submitting this written statement purchased her townhouse behind my mother's, kind of just catty-cornered to the other one, in 1983, with the understanding that this was a planned unit development. And we really strongly believe, you know, I know the owner of 27 states that he'll have to move, he can't raise children. Well, you know, that really was not a concern, you know, during the development of this property, and he was well aware of all this when, you know, obviously when he purchased. And again, you have this in the package, but it shows the walls coming out and everything else. So again, and I don't know if you have the auditor report that does state the three-bedroom, two-full existing baths.
Oh, this one right here.
So you may have that. I don't know if you need that, but I would like to give you the petition and the letter. So, thank you.
Okay.
Didn't expect to speak, but thank you very much.
Thank you for the comments, and I'm sorry for your loss as well.
Thank you very much. This is the, her written statement. She could not be here today, and this is the two-page petition. Should I?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, John, I'm of the opinion that it still should be treated like a PUD if the, if their basically statutes are written the way that you presented them, that they are basically, there's 25 years unless something is done otherwise, they extend another 10 years and so forth. So I would think the person responsible for the PUD would have to bring these changes to the commission for us to rule on it.
Right, and that's, that's fine, I think, and that's what we'll have to look at on any time as an application like this comes through. Obviously, there's been some small additions granted, usually within the insets of the existing buildings that don't extend past the footprint per se. I mean, they're kind of recessed, they already have a roof over top of them. But there have been some that have had a roof built over top of it, and I'm not saying those were right or wrong, but, so I think this, this one that I think we need to really look at and determine in the future for, not just this project but others, that it could affect us down the road. So if we deem that a PUD lasts forever, then anytime anyone wants to do addition, it should come through here and then through city council process.
All right, so, go ahead. If we're going to look at this as case, I would, some of the information that would be relevant to this would be the past variances that have been granted and denied. In other words, a laundry list of, you know, what has been approved and not approved in the past.
I will put that together. I do have a very brief summary of it here, but for when they do the actual submission, I will, and to come here and get on the schedule, then I will do that. I'll have it for you to review.
If possible, you can, if you could get the photos that she submitted, at least showed us electronically maybe or something. The photos, do you have electronic presentation? When you get a chance for the case when it comes up, yes, for later down the line?
I'll come back and re-present. And then just submit what I have?
Yes. You have a petition, but you're showing us photos and to have a better overview of what's going on, it'd be nice to see.
I can reply with you, if that helps or not.
Now would work, I guess. That's fine, your choice. I'd hate to take your only photos. That's more important.
Can you give them back so I can speak again?
Yes, I think so. Send them to my office and all.
Well, the process would be such that we would just be recommending to council, correct?
Yeah, on PUDs, we're going to make a recommendation. City council has to approve or deny the requirement. We're basically recommending what we think would be in the best interest of city council to do. All right, and then I guess we're either, the motion is, I guess, to make this a case number for going forward if something does come up.
Yeah, I have to get with them and determine what they, they want to attend, and we'll get it on the agenda.
Okay.
So, and put a case to it.
Okay.
And I'll have the full packets for everybody at that time.
Okay. All right, sorry to interrupt you, John. Any further discussion or questions? All right. Yeah, let's, so the motion is to make that a case number. All those in favor?
Excuse me. I'm not sure why we would make it a case number until the application is actually submitted.
Well, I guess it would be not, I don't, we could still have communication on it, I guess, as well, so.
I haven't seen an application, but I denied it, and that's why I went to the BZA. So, it's a different process where the application comes here first, so we'll figure it out.
All right, then motion, I will change the motion to table further discussion on the item.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, any further discussion on that item?
No.
All right. Next communication is where it concerns business districts in the Title 23 zoning code. There was quite a confusion that, just per face of that the past couple meetings, the regular meeting and the special session of how it principally permitted uses are listed in the B, business districts and zones, as well as how parking, whether it's an accessory or principally permitted use in those zones. We'd like to have kind of a brief discussion today to try to make some changes where it pertains to that. Believe, I think in my packet I have some of the business zones listed here. Give me one moment. I think the discussion at the last meeting was where in the B2 business district, where it lists under principally permitted uses, uses, number one, it lists as residential uses, and number two, it lists as automotive services and service stations. Under one, residential uses, it says residential uses are permitted only on the second story and above. One of the recommendations that I'd like to present is that it should say residential uses are permitted only above other, I'm sorry, residential uses are permitted only above permitted business use. So that it is specified, if you're, a residential use would have to have a business use affiliated with it in the B2 district.
Well, I think you need it to be clarified a little more, so.
Go ahead, John.
Because the parking lot is a permitted business use. So that's why I'm saying that we need to define, do we want to allow parking on the first floor under residential? And clarify it from there.
In a business zone.
In a business zone, correct.
Do you have, I noticed when you were giving it in the packet, words from the Finley, Ohio, design requirements and standards. It says 1172.03A8B1. Located, okay, residential standards for common single-wall family detached dwellings, two-family dwellings, multifamily dwellings, da-da-da-da-da. It says located on second story or higher. The second story is kind of faded, I imagine they had it in color or something like that when they copied it. Above commercial and office uses excluding parking garages. Would that fit the bill, I guess is the question. Do you have a copy of that?
No.
Somewhere in the back.
Mine's been disassembled. Oh, it's on the back.
Okay. So that's obviously one wording. I know that, I forget who, was it you, Nicholas, who put forward the Columbus?
Yeah, then that's where that has to be above permitted business use. This, I'm not sure, I think this is what John had put together.
Which is basically 2004.
Again, that was the one I did, Paul was holding it.
Paul was what?
That you're holding, the front side is our current, and then I added on the bold print just as a recommendation or a guide. It's not anything that we're saying. Because I guess one of the things Paul and I have discussed is, do we want to allow parking? Say, for example, on Court Street, if we had businesses at the front half of the building and they're required in the B3 area to have parking on site, that parking could be on the first floor behind the business area. So, and still have residential above it. But that parking, so that's where we're, or do we want to say the entire first floors have to be residential?
No, see, I would think.
I mean, excuse me, business, I'm sorry.
I would think parking would be permitted on the first floor. I mean, I think we have to say that one property frontage has to be the permitted principal business use though, however. So, you know, I think certain streets like Court Street, Stimson Avenue, you know, perhaps portions of East State Street, you know, we should basically just have thoroughfares that have to have, the property frontage on those thoroughfares have to be a permitted principal use. That is, you know, business, or if it's residential, parking, you know, would be, could still be, you know, behind that on that same level, but it has to be adjoining that principal permitted use.
Right. But could that parking then be used for that business, or could it be used for the residential above? That's.
Yeah, right now you have, you have it as parking, that's basically for the residential.
But in this zone, you would have a requirement for off-street parking for business and for residential?
Yes.
And so, it doesn't make any sense to talk that about.
I guess one thing I thought, you know, it hasn't really been discussed, everybody's playing word games, but I thought maybe you would say.
Why would it be in the interest of commercial businesses to have a commercial use on the first floor? And the answer is simply foot traffic. And I do believe that some of the people who responded actually talked about that. Their livelihood depends on that foot traffic. And so it seems to me that it's pretty straightforward. We need commercial use on the first floor, off-street parking where required. I don't think you should get into the residential and commercial division. I just think it should be not in the, on the first floor. That's basically my opinion. The first floor, the structure, it could be behind it.
Okay, so it could be.
It's only my opinion.
No, I understand.
And you mentioned Uptown, two blocks of Uptown are in the B2D that you can utilize the parking garage, correct?
B2D.
But particularly concerning B3.
The far north, just the last block.
B3, the buffer zone.
And right, you should.
If my memory is correct, was it Courtside Pizza, was that Corwell's Building? Actually, at one time was had all, was trying to get commercial on the first floor, and they never able to achieve it because nothing off the Court Street frontage could be, was viable for, for commercial use. So they came to, was, I assume they came to the Zone Board Appeals or?
Yes.
Thought it was a PUD.
That was a PUD, so it had to go.
They had a variance to get residential on the first floor.
And also they have this, a lot across the street that they, so it's about, not a good example.
No, and I remember what, earlier versions, the B2D also had something about not seeing industry in the front window or something like that, so it was very esoteric or something. So really what we're trying to do is establish foot, like foot traffic, commercial, make sure it's commercial and that parking. So we have three different versions floating around here. We have the Columbus version, we have a, one generated by the code office for B business districts, and then the Finley version.
Yeah, I mean, I think, the one that John had presented here in the, sort of on the backside of the Finley version, I think works. I mean, I think the concern is that, I don't think we need to state here about the parking as it pertains to residential or as business, as Nancy suggested, so that last line could be stricken. And I think it would sort of do justice to what we're trying to achieve, which is, residential uses are permitted only on the second story and above, provided that a convenience business, general business, or services establishment is provided at grade or first floor of the primary street frontage. I do think we still need to define convenience business, general business, or services establishment.
Do you mean we need to define that in this instance or in general?
It would be like 2310 definitions. It needs to be, whether, you know, either we're going to list, actually just list the permitted uses for each zone, you know, like a B3, a hospital, you know, is permitted, or, you know, and B1, a barber shop, you know, I think we might actually want to go to that use, level of uses. I mean, we're in a small enough area that I think we could define that, and then it would either go, you know, we could have a clause that if that use is not a main use, if it meets the general character of that zone as determined by either the BZA or the city planner, then, you know, they can proceed with that permit request.
Still leaves a lot open to interpretation. I could see a tattoo parlor if we have not listed it.
Absolutely, that's why I think we need to list it. I don't know, I guess if we can achieve that in today's meeting, but that's what I asked Charlie to distribute, one sort of attempt at that, just looking specifically at the business zones with listing the uses.
Is this yours too, Ben?
Yeah, yes. But again, it's just in draft form still.
So Nicholas, I was thinking that maybe there's already an inherent kind of interpretive base in the B2s, B1s, B2s, and so on, in the question of 24-hour operation. You know, so in general, you don't have, close to the neighborhoods, 24-hour operation lights, and in fact, it's pretty emphatic in some of those. So maybe the, we do have a planner, and maybe the planner has an opinion, but I wonder about articulating all of these businesses because the zoning code is forever. It takes a while to change it. You know, I just, my opinion is a little bit different. Maybe Paul has a, Paul, Luke has an approach, not nailing it down to every, maybe he wants to not get involved in this. Sorry about your involvement.
I haven't thought too much about that specific part. I think it's, there's certainly hundreds, if not thousands, of examples of cities that do go into extremely detailed use. I guess my comment on that, or my first one, would be that if we're going to get into that much detail with the use, does three business zones, is that adequate for all the different potential uses we could see for commercial and office and retail options out there? And so, that's the question, I don't have, I don't have an easy answer to, you know, we've got what, general business, local business is all, is B1, I believe, B2 is general business, and then?
Regional business.
B3 is a regional, yeah.
Yeah, regional, pretty much.
And there is also, there's a use classification system that does get into a lot more of those specifics that breaks commercial uses down into, I think, almost 20 different varieties based on, and there's like regional, but that's. based on, and there's like regional, but then there's also super-regional, which would be for, that you'd want to have your roads, your zonings, et cetera, you know, for people that would be coming from within 100 miles to do business or to do shopping, and then there'd be local regional that would be for within your county or within a 30-mile radius. So, we do have that, there is that level of detail. There's plenty of examples out there. I think Columbus does a really good job with that, actually.
I know, I think, one of the problems we have in the code is that oftentimes, a specific use is not identified in the business zones unless there's a limitation on it. So, for example, a bottoming works is listed in B3, but its distance is limited to an R-zone. So, does that mean a bottoming works is a business, is it allowed in a B1 with no limitation?
Good question.
Do you know what I mean? So, I think that's the problem we run into with the code, is that oftentimes, we don't actually see a specific use listed until there's a limitation on it. I guess I'd rather, I'd try to be more prescriptive of what's permitted in a zone rather than prohibitive. You know, I think we do have to, though, don't get me wrong, but I think we need to start being more prescriptive on what is permitted.
Another option would be to try to, for those uses not listed, would be to try to give guidance to the Board of Zoning Appeals with how to interpret what's, what else would be permitted, and maybe, you know, time guidelines would be a good indicator, like Nancy said. If it's a business that would traditionally be open from 8:00 to 5:00 or 8:00 to 6:00, then that might give them some interpretation if it's a use that we haven't seen in the past. But if it's a business that's expected to be open until 2:00 in the morning or 5:00 in the morning, or midnight to 6:00 AM, that would give them different indications for where it should fit.
All right. As it, I mean, how do other members feel about, I mean, I think I would like to see some movement today just on the residential aspect, that if we, you at least add that convenience business, general business, or service establishment, but, I mean, I think we would have to follow it up again at the next meeting with define, you know, starting that, attempt to define what those businesses, what are conveniences business, what are general businesses, what are services establishments?
Do you feel confident enough to amend it as you have it here, provided that convenience business, general business? I mean, that looks okay, even worth the 50%. It's long, it looks okay to me, but I don't really have enough experience to say. I mean, I'm just shocked if it happens.
I'm not comfortable. I, you know, I think, I get, there's this feeling now of urgency, but I think we need to step back and look at the 50% in terms of parking. And again, I still feel that, you know, if the businesses has to be defined to a certain level, and we still have this issue on parking, I don't know that this corrects interpretation.
Good. We can always backtrack to the definition of parking. If I remember that, there were two or three definitions of parking in our code, one being private, one being public.
One being accessory and one being principal.
Yeah. That's the other way to come about it. Again.
I mean, I like, at the last meeting, I thought you had a very keen concept of it where, that if, if parking is required for use, it's a, it sort of is, becomes part of that use. So, if parking is required for a residence, then it should be considered a residential use. Parking is required for a business, it should be considered a part business use.
But that would still leave open, somebody says, I'm running a business on the second floor, and I want parking all on the first floor, which of course would be impinging on the foot traffic we're trying to generate. And again, it's part of the dialogue I've had with the planners, you know, the B3 zones are all different characters in many cases.
Yeah, absolutely.
And to say, okay, we want foot traffic on East State Street, well, it works to a certain extent, but not really, that's not the primary goal of B3, you know, on East State Street sidewalks. And then, there's always corporations of people. I mean, if it's a business, there's another person, so we can just stick somebody in that first floor in there. Oh, we've got a resolution on that. I forgot.
I'm not having that.
Yeah, I've got a resolution on it. I forgot. You're no longer a part of the council.
Right. And really, and Paul brought up that, Paul had brought up that point at first, that the B3 right now is basically, right, I think we've oftentimes interpreted it as this sort of regional business district, but then, you know, it's also, and on the map, it's in places that most would not consider to be regional business districts, such as Stimson Avenue, which is generally a foot traffic. I look at that more like a community business district, where, you know, it's sort of in between two neighborhoods there.
It's actually very heavily traveled vehicular because of the access to the highway, and I think it's both.
Right. Okay.
You know, from the disability side, Disability Commission, they always talk about the amount of foot traffic that's going on in Stimson, and that's why they've been always pushing us to upgrade the sidewalks and the ramps and everything like that. I'm a little bit worried about just the listing that you have here, because things will change over time.
Absolutely, yeah.
Footwear and repair. I don't think there's many people doing repair footwear anymore.
Right.
Yeah, we throw it away.
What?
We throw it away.
Well, nobody does it anymore. Funeral homes and services, appropriate for B2, maybe, I don't know. Camera photo finishing, photographic supply stores.
Well, that, I was taking the approach of the B1, again, is for, it's a set, like a business center for a particular neighborhood. A B2 would be conglomerate of neighborhoods, a sort of a business center for those. B2D is its own unique character. It's the uptown or the downtown business district. And B3 is a regional business district, which is pointing on a lot more than just city traffic, so to speak, such as East State Street, or perhaps Columbus Road.
So, if you're having this discussion, or if you're, don't you think that we should probably look at our existing zones, not to saw this down, but eventually, because I think the citizens on East State have said, move the business zone further south, whether, you know, I don't know where that is. Haven't they?
On East State Street?
On East State, North Side. And there's a business zone that goes all the way into Speedway.
I think that's a B1, goes to Madison to May.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
And then, what's it back there? I can't see it from here.
I was thinking about the one that goes way into the neighborhoods, the brown, the brown one, B3.
It's B3.
Wow, it does.
Oh.
I mean, do we have enough room for business? Is it in the right place?
Yeah, kind of where the Bob Evans and library is.
Well, the North Side is what she's-
Oh, just-
The North Side is the one that I think is-
That's ODNR, right?
Well, this is where the neighborhoods are. Green Drive, et cetera.
Oh, right. Okay.
Oh, that, that far east side.
Yes. Oh, it's the far east side, I'm sorry. You know, and going back to Nicholas's floor in Smeltzer dead, I mean, I don't approve of it, but the Zoning Board of Appeals did permit some residential on the first floor behind that building that used to be the footprint place, next to the Christian church.
From West State.
Yeah. Didn't they? The Zoning Board a couple of years ago? I mean, I don't-
You talked about his offices on West State.
Smeltzer, yes. Ameriplex, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so there's residential on the first floor there.
Right, in the rear.
In the rear.
Commercial office on-
I'm not sure, I mean, I wasn't happy when they did it, but the Zoning Board is the Zoning Board. They do what they do. But, it's just a, sort of, I'm talking at both sides of my mouth now, because Nicholas's proposal I like, but, you know, I don't necessarily like one manifestation of it.
Well, I still, again, my premise is still a little vague on what business is, you know, I think we argued semantics for a couple hours on whether parking's a business. In the end, it had nothing to do with the parking, had the fact to do with that residential was permitted on the second story as a principal use. So, I think we'd run into that same issue if we just keep it vague like that.
I think that's why the Finley code works in a lot of ways. I mean, it's just, the idea, I think, right now, is the parking under the residential in the B zones, instead of doing all this other stuff. So, it just clearly says, located on, the residential's permitted in the B areas, as long as it's over a commercial or office use excluding parking.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's as simple as well. So. Will you say, first floor of the primary street frontage, I mean, yeah, so that would be the whole first floor you could not use?
Well, that's what you, we can discuss.
Yeah. And maybe, we can, I mean, provide it later as a setback. You know, we could have a setback for parking from the primary street frontage as well. In other words, if parking has to be, if parking's considered an accessory use, and if we're of the opinion that you cannot have an accessory use on a site without a principal use?
Parking would be a required use.
What was that?
Parking would be a required use.
Right, required use. That's what I'm saying. If your parking's a required use, you would have to, you know, if there were a setback for, from the primary street frontage for parking, you wouldn't be able to develop a building on the site. You know, if you would put the parking in front and have that setback, you'd be limited to actually get a building on there, so it would basically force buildings to the street frontage.
Think again, overly.
Yeah. And, I just, I guess I don't have parking, the last sentence needs to be included. In the, the parking at this level is permissible but cannot be greater than 50%.
I thought we were going to delete that sentence.
Yeah, that's what.
Okay.
All right. So, I would put forth a motion to accept the change to residential uses are permitted only on the second story and above, provided that a convenience business, general business, or services establishment is provided at grade or first floor of the primary street frontage. And that's it. I would also have the condition that we need to define what those convenience business, general business, services establishments are in the 2310. Or say, just, you could maybe just say excluding parking was your suggestion, right? So.
The other thing I'd ask about is, just with the constant changing of business, that, you know, in the future, businesses may not need as much storefront or office space as they do today, just with consolidation, and given also the small amount of property that's really available to a lot of potential businesses, would we, as far as that 50%, be enabling them still to create parking underneath the second floor, as long as business was being used on the other 50% or better of the footprint of the building?
You know, the trend I'm seeing most of the time is, again, we just had a Title 41 here where the guy wants to add a third more space to the building. The Stimson Avenue, if that was a business, that'd be expanding. I don't know if businesses are actually contracting in terms of square footage. I mean, I was thinking, I'm trying to think of where we've actually shrunk down in a particular storefront.
Well, I'm not, I'm just trying to think in the future, because, you know, as far as like, well, my wife's business, the equipment that she's using is probably down by 50% as far as the actual size of the equipment. Well, if you transfer that to some other business-
She has a storefront?
Well, in terms of what, what space they need in terms of storage, in terms of office space, whatever, customer space, you know, do you want to make room for that, or you just want to completely make, eliminate that 50% to where somebody could not use underground, well, first floor space for two or three parking spaces that would satisfy what they need in terms of their business?
Well, I think that's-
That's the thing, I'm just trying to look in down the road on.
Well, I mean-
Now, I'd say that, you know, what you're proposing is satisfactory. But I'm just trying to look in terms of, or is that something, then, that we would go with what we're talking about right now, eliminating the 50%, and just saying that, you know, variances just need to go to the BZA at that point? Would that be the simplest? Because, you know, I'm looking for the simplest.
Well, the simplest would be elimination of that second sentence, and after that, it's up to interpretation. But again, if you're talking about parking, and again, we're talking about different sets of parking. I mean, if you're, the dialogue I'm hearing from you is that if the business shrinks but requires parking, it's a commercial parking aspect. If you take the business shrinks-
Well, not only shrinks, but I mean, you're just dealing with-
The footprint shrinks.
Right.
Okay. But at that point, is there, are we adding our residential as the footprint of the business shrinks, are we adding residential? At that point, it's another Title 41 review, and therefore, that would be taken into consideration. We, this planning commission, or the future planning commission would see that.
Well, for instance, when we proposed with the Graham Drive, we had, one of the things that we floated was the idea that, well, half that space underneath could be used for office space, and the other space could be used for parking for that office space. It didn't change the structure above, but it allowed for, it made allowance for being able to have something smaller in terms of office space and still use the space below on that first level for business that would be associated with the business, not with the residential. But again, if that's something that the BZA can deal with, then, then this makes sense as it is.
Right, I mean, it just, it states that it's provided at grade or first floor of the primary street frontage. So, that would imply that through the length of the primary street frontage, there's a storefront.
I felt that was implied before. I don't know, I guess you're asking for a vote today when the first review is just now occurring, and I just-
No, I, I probably, I don't mean to rush anyone, I just want to-
Yeah, technically, this is a communication.
Well, I think there is, there is a need to act fairly efficiently on this, because, as I have said before, if this type of structure is being sold in the community, then it probably is fitting to eliminate that loophole and give greater strength for the code enforcement to be able to reject it at that level, rather than having it come all the way up here. And I think that's, that's the expediency that, you know, I particularly have wanted to see in this. I felt like that there was a loophole with the Graham Drive, and I think that there's, you know, the loophole, obviously, with the project on Stimson. And so, you know, I think if, if you do have one or more architects who are proposing this type of project before some of these loopholes are eliminated, then I think it's causing greater consternation for everybody involved. And I think that, you know, perhaps the code enforcement gets greater direction in terms of, you know, what they can reject at the beginning, rather than having things come through here.
I would point out that my interpretation was, it's not a loophole, and that, if you remember the vote from last week, this, the Stimson did not conform to the zoning code. So, therefore, you're preaching to somebody-
But the Graham did.
The Graham dialogue, if you remember from the minutes, was such that they were talking about putting a business in the first floor.
Yeah, that's, well, that's not how I heard it initially.
Or nor how it was presented.
That's not how it was presented initially.
The elevated one was?
No. No. That's not, that's, then we're hearing two different things.
I'm just going on what was in the minutes and what I was-
He didn't have any idea what to do with, he had no plans.
Future commercial use?
No.
So, all right. So, therefore, we don't perceive loophole, and this, at least on this side, we don't perceive loophole that needs to be fixed immediately either. It's just a question of how you interpret this and how the next vote is for the next one. And after, and if we vote it down, another Title 41, the code officer would obviously interpret that as the next time something comes in front of us, it does require a little bit, a different blend to fit the code. You know, and again, this is just one person on the planning commission who's got this opinion, or maybe two, I don't know.
Well, can I ask some feedback from the code enforcement director?
Your discussion. That's just which way we want to go. I mean, is there a concern for parking under residential in the business zones? And if there is, I think we probably ought to strengthen it a little bit more, as to adding something to clarify that.
That's an option. Because obviously-
And I don't know what that is. I don't know if we want the 50% or if we don't want it. I mean, I'm leaving that open, so it's for you guys to discuss.
Because everybody at the frontline level checked off on all these projects, so something must be, in my mind, amiss in someplace in the, in the wording. And what I would like to do is, is eliminate any type of confusion or vagary to where it makes frontline people easier to interpret what is desirable to be viewed on this, on the planning commission, as, you know, for both interpretations to, to match up, because obviously don't if these projects are coming to us.
I think, and for example, in the B1 district, it lists residential uses. Does that mean residential uses, uses are allowed in the B1 district regardless if there's a business with it, above it, below it, next to it?
Mm-hmm.
Or can you just build a single-family home in the B1 district?
Yes, if residential's allowed in the B2 and right or up, so yeah, that would be most of them. We don't have a whole lot of B1.
See, because that would be my concern then as well, is residential could just be in the business, neighborhood business zone, that defeats the whole point of having that zone.
The B1 zone?
Yeah. Because right now, it just says residential uses, it doesn't even specify, it has to be on the second story or above.
Or B2, in the P2 zone?
In the, in the B1, under principal permitted uses number four.
And what's it say?
Residential uses, any use permitted and as regulated in the residential district adjoining the B1 zone, and if they're adjoining two or more different categories of residence zones, regulations of the least restrictive residence zone shall prevail. So that was suggested in the B1, you can just do anything that's in an adjacent, the least restrictive adjacent zone.
That's right, and there's been projects that have been approved using that as well.
Yeah, and so, that's why I think it is important that we need to clarify what is permitted in the code. I mean, if we don't want to see residential, in a primarily residential in a business code, we have to make it clear that. But dwelling units or residential is permitted if it's with another business. Like, basically, we have to put mixed use in the code.
I'll have to look at B1, I thought that was allowed, I guess.
But a residential use in a B1 zone follows the residential setbacks, isn't that right?
Yes, it does, too, yeah.
And so, it's, and there's so few spaces, last time, a previous, since John Caskin accessed our memory all the time, we could also go back and say there was a planning commission before this, that we should get rid of all the local business zones, and they said they were just, no, no point in having them, blah, 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 so. And I think council said no.
I think most of the people in B1 zones said no, too.
Yes, most of the businesses in B1 zones, yeah.
All right, well, I think, I don't think we're going to come to a conclusion today on this, I think it's something that we need to continue to have on the agenda at each of the proceedings meetings.
Okay, and let me reiterate, my take on this is, again, in the B2D, where it says, as it stands now, in the present, present code, if I understand correctly, residence, residential uses are permitted only on a second story or above. And, and my interpretation of parking that is required for a residential zone is not a business.
Right.
And that's, that's, I mean, that's my interpretation of everything in the code as it stands now.
Right.
One word not added, one word not subtracted.
Right.
Okay.
I agree with that, yeah, I think it, it errors, is it doesn't then, it doesn't imply that you have to have a, it just says principal permitted use, that residence has to be on the second story, never implies what's on the first story.
Principal permitted use, any convenience business, general business, or service establishment subjecting to fine conditions. So it has to be a business. Residential parking is not a business. Required resident, that parking is not a business.
I agree, but the B1s is the same thing. Any local retail business or service establishment supplying commodities or performing services primarily for the residents of the neighborhood. And yet, it says you can have a residence in there.
That's a B1 zone.
So would we be maintaining this on that agenda as a communication, or does there a place for business, or that's, other than cases?
I, I guess on the, I, yeah, I mean, if people don't think there's any issue with the code, and the code, Director of Code Enforcement's interpretation of the code, then maybe we don't need to do anything. But, I guess.
I think we need to do something.
I do, too, that's why I'm not sure why there's so much resistance to having this as a communication.
Well, what you could do is this, you could, you know, say, maybe somebody wants to appeal the decision of the zoning administrator with respect to this particular option, with respect to the Stimson Avenue, but I believe the time may have passed for that. So, you know, that would be a strategy that I would think would be a reasonable one, to say, in fact, the code is sound, but the zoning administrator erred in this particular case. I mean, no, no negatives. And, you know, so it's not always been the case that it's happened this way, and so, since it's fairly recent, two examples.
And the peer would go to the BZA.
Right.
And I guess the dialogue we're making a communication out is, do we want to actually make this, bring it to the forefront? A communication, to my mind, is more of an informal discussion here, to actually take a vote on it.
It'd have to be a case, or?
Well, I don't know, we want to bring it a little bit more prominent, and, and I know we were discussing whether we needed, we're not required for a public hearing, but even then, we'll have to look at that as well.
Okay.
Do we have another business, or call it what you want, I guess it would be another.
And if you really think the B1 is a lacking section of code, that's another thing to actually, you know, we're remodeling the entire code, because we had started at B3, and now we're whittling it down all the way to B1.
Well, I think it's all the business districts that apply, yes. The B1, B2, I mean, I, when I, I think it's important that we have to make clear that business is the primary use, you can have other uses, but there has to be the business use on the site. So, I, I put forward a motion to table further discussion on this item today.
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion, Thomas? All right, I'll do some favors, we're on discussion.
Hi.
Any opposition? All right, thank you.